Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 11th meeting of the Penfield Planning Board. Once again, we are coming to you via Zoom and Penfield Community Television. Due to the public health and safety concerns related to COVID-19, this meeting is being conducted remotely pursuant to the Governor's executive orders, including Executive Order 202.1, which suspended certain provisions of the open meetings law. This meeting is being video recorded and is also being broadcast live on the Town of Penfield's website, www.penfield.org, and on the Town of Penfield's Government Access Channel, Channel Number 1303. Meeting will also be later transcribed. We will have a public hearing. It's starting around 7:00, and there will be public participation opportunities for the hearing. I will announce the appropriate time for participation for the application. And to address the board during the public participation portion of the meeting, please call 585-340-8771 to be connected with Penfield TV or complete an electronic submission form that will be available on the town's website, www.penfield.org, right now during the meeting. So you can always submit electronically. I'll also read this again later. And with that, we do have a slight change. We have two additional board members sitting in the room with us, which makes us very excited. We see the light at the end of the tunnel here. And Lori, with that, if you could please call the roll.
Sure. Hetskey?
Hetskey here.
Bastian?
Bastian here.
Canower?
Canower here.
Tidings?
Tidings here.
Burton?
Burton here.
Nurseinger?
Here.
Sangster?
Sangster here.
O'Connor?
O'Connor here.
Wyshar?
Wyshar here.
And Gray here.
Okay, great. Thank you, Lori. We have meeting minutes that have been put together for May 14th and May 28th. Hopefully, everyone has had an opportunity to review them. And if somebody would like to move to approve the May 14th-
Make a motion to approve.
Okay.
I'll second. Bastian second.
So we have Tidings making the motion and Bastian seconding for May 14th.
Perfect. Hetskey?
Hetskey, aye.
Bastian?
Bastian, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Canower?
Canower, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Okay, May 28th meeting minutes?
I'll move to approve the May 28th meeting minutes.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, so moved by Bastian, seconded by Tidings, approving the May 28th. Sorry, Lori.
That's okay.
Double cutoff.
Hetskey, aye.
Bastian?
Bastian, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Canower?
Canower, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Okay, May 28th meeting minutes?
I'll move to approve the May 28th meeting minutes.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, so moved by Bastian, seconded by Tidings, approving the May 28th. Sorry, Lori.
That's okay.
Double cutoff.
Hetskey, aye.
Bastian?
Bastian, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Canower?
Canower, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Okay. Zach, would you like to review our tabled applications and the rest of the agenda?
Sure thing. Thank you all. We have three tabled items from our previous meetings, and I'll start going through them. The first one is for Starbucks at the one we've been reviewing for the past two meetings, at Parkside Commons. Brief updates, we got a revised plan that I'm gonna put up. I gotta do a little screen share here, and I will throw that up on the projector for you. All right, here we go. So what we see here on this plan does address the board's questions and concerns about traffic control, pedestrian safety on the access drive that's being converted to a parking area. This has been the primary concern of the board throughout this review process. The applicant has addressed that, both with these plans and submissions of their third-party review for traffic circulation within the plaza, as well as pedestrian circulation as well. We reviewed both of those documents from Bergman. We agree with both on this plan. I'm just gonna zoom in. Oh, please zoom in. Come on. There we go. As you see, one of the improvements that we've installed is the slow pavement markings as people drive in from 250, turn into this site, as they approach the parking area, once they've gotten past the crosswalk, which will have, which is proposed to have a solar-powered, illuminated pedestrian warning sign, as you see on the plan. That slow marking is there, again, to warn drivers, slow down. We have a new configuration here, and this is a parking area with people crossing it from their cars to go into the site. We have another, at the north side of the parking area, we have the same thing. What I'm gonna pull up next is an example of, I'll please be here, of the pedestrian crossing sign that is solar-powered, flashing, illuminated. This is the DOT's standards, so the one thing that our staff wants to follow up as a condition of this project is that we want to confirm that the DOT is comfortable with placing one of these at this site, given its proximity to Route 250. We do not want to create a distraction for drivers that are just traveling on Route 250 normally.
Right.
I think it, you know, we know that there's an emphasis on pedestrian protection here, and again, the education of letting people know this is a new configuration. But if we can install this, we will. If not, we will have all the yield-to-pedestrian signs installed.
Okay.
And again, as you enter the site, one of the measures that you first see is the crosswalk, which I think is a good early warning to any driver coming in off the road that you see pavement markings for a crosswalk here, rather than further into the site, you see it before you start making your turn. So if the flashing lights don't make it on because of concerns for distractions, the markings, the signage, the slow markers, there are a lot of measures in place to alert drivers before you enter the parking area, that this is a new configuration, along with the landscaping improvements that they're proposing to help pinch your point of view as you're going through. So with that being said, they've addressed all the concerns from us at this time. It seems like they've addressed everything from the board. We had prepared, completed EAF and draft approval resolution for this project, unless you have any other. I'll open it up to the board for questions right now, or any other comments, and we'll go from there.
I'm all set.
Okay.
All set. Everybody satisfied with the altered plans and the plan for the solar-powered light to be kind of given the blessing by the DOT before we put it in?
I think it's a good plan.
I do, too.
I'm good with it.
All right.
All right, so we need to approve the EAF, right?
Correct.
I'll move to approve the EAF?
I'll second.
So Bastian, make the motion. Canower seconded to approve the EAF.
Okay, Hetskey?
Hetskey, aye.
Bastian?
Bastian, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Canower?
Canower, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
All right. Do you want to move to approve the approval resolution?
I'll move to approve the draft approval resolution.
And I'll second.
So we have a motion by Bastian and a second by Canower.
All right. Hetskey?
Hetskey, aye.
Bastian?
Bastian, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Canower?
Canower, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
All right. We will soon see a Starbucks in Parkside Commons.
Parkside Commons, yep. The one plaza that doesn't say Plaza.
Thank you, everybody.
Sure, thanks, Freddie.
Thanks, Fred.
We really appreciate it. Thank you guys so much.
All right, have a good night.
You're welcome. Good luck.
Moving on to our second tabled application for the Forest Ridge subdivision at Jackson and Plank Road. This was a point, this project, I'll pull this up. This has been, these plans were submitted to staff on the 28th of last month in response to our PRC comments, and to reflect their written responses on May 7th that were received. Our staff has been reviewing these since our last meeting. We're relatively comfortable with the plans and supportive of them moving to pre-MILAR. The town board did discuss this project at its meeting yesterday for their request for a sidewalk waiver in the subdivision. This would allow them to not install sidewalks on one side of the roads internally, as well as the frontages of Jackson and Plank Road. It does, as a reminder, this does propose to install one side of sidewalks throughout the subdivision. Planning Board was supportive of that. Town Board is generally supportive of that. They are reviewing one other matter right now, and the town engineer is gonna be in touch with the developer before that gets discussed at the town board's next meeting to make a decision on their sidewalk waiver. Again, they're generally supportive of it. At this point, we just have technical items on staff's end with the plans, and there are SWIP and engineers' reports, minor corrections that need to be updated, and we'll start collecting easements and the other necessary information that will go from here. So as I was directed from last meeting, EAF and draft approval were prepared for the board. Again, open it up to comments and questions from the board if you have anything else to ask on this project.
Does anybody have any final comments on this?
Okay.
This was Jim's application, so I didn't know if he had anything else.
No, I'm good, Zach. I move to continue to table the application.
You want to continue tabling, or we have the draft approval?
Well, we have to wait for the town board to act.
On the sidewalk waiver, we typically don't. That's a matter that they'll ultimately decide, and then we'll get it updated on the plans with regards to that final sidewalk configuration.
Right, but you said there's one other matter.
No, no, that was the only matter left. It was regarding the sidewalks and how much of the waiver would be granted. I'm sorry for not explaining that better.
Okay. Okay. Then I move to-
EAF first?
I'm sorry?
The EAF first?
Yeah, so I move to approve the EIF.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion by Burton and a second by Tidings to approve the environmental assessment form.
All done.
Okay, Hetskey?
Hetskey, aye.
Bastian?
Bastian, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Canower?
Canower, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
All right, that's approved. And then the resolution.
So I move to advance the approval resolution?
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Burton and a second by Bastian to approve the Forest Ridge subdivision.
Hetskey?
Hetskey, aye.
Bastian?
Bastian, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Canower?
Canower, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Okay, that is approved. Do we still have those folks online? If so, good luck, and have a good rest of your summer. Okay, next item.
Our final tabled matter for this evening is Stafford Park, 20-lot subdivision on Jackson Road at 1918 Jackson Road. Quick update on it, town board also discussed this project yesterday. There were two items on their agenda at their work session, the first being the landscaped island in the cul-de-sac. This request from the applicant was denied by the town board due to previous and historical issues that the town has had with landscaped islands in our right-of-way on dedicated roads. We have too many, we've apparently, apparently we've had too many situations where they've gone into disrepair, and we've been forced to actually remove them and pave over them. The few that we have installed and are still being maintained, we're thankful for them, but our design criteria is call for a new approach to this and try to avoid future maintenance issues. So the town board took action and denied that based on our history. And again, because this is a dedicated road, that option is not there. If this was a private road, different story, but as a dedicated road, that request was denied. Moving on to the sidewalk waiver, the town board granted a full sidewalk waiver to this application. This board was majority supportive of installing sidewalks on one side of it from our discussion at the last meeting. The applicant still requested to have a full waiver. Town Board granted that. Those funds from the sidewalk waiver fee will be allocated to the sidewalk budget, and the town will begin working with residents who can gather a petition, if they're interested, to install sidewalks on Jackson Road. It is a long process, but there is a process for it, and the town board, again, wanted to use that waiver opportunity to potentially offset the cost of installing sidewalks on Jackson Road rather than inside this subdivision. So that's the update on that. This plan that you see will be updated to reflect that. They actually had provided us a revised plan showing the possibility of sidewalks and the landscaped island, but those will be updated and removed. This does now include the monument sign for the subdivision, which is up entirely on Lot 1, and they will have a deed restriction that says they're the ones to maintain that once a developer has pulled out of the subdivision and all the lots have been sold. What else do I have? And this project's been thoroughly reviewed by this board. We've had a lot of public comments, and they've all been answered to this point. Staff is comfortable with the plans where they are. Obviously, as usual, we just have a couple of technical items to button up as part of a pre-MILAR review process that comes after this. And in preparation of this meeting, we did provide the completed EAF and draft approval resolution. So again, I'll open it up to the board for any additional comments.
I'm good with it.
I'm good with it.
The rest of the board members are good.
Okay.
Okay. So with that being said-
Jim, anything from you?
No, I'm good.
All right.
Okay, I'm gonna make the motion to approve, or the short EAF.
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Tidings, seconded by Bastian to approve the environmental assessment form.
Hetskey?
Hetskey, aye.
Bastian?
Bastian, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Canower?
Canower, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Okay, that's passed.
And then I'll make the motion to, for the draft approval resolution.
I'll second.
So motion to approve the resolution by Tidings, seconded by Bastian.
Okay, Hetskey?
Hetskey, aye.
Bastian?
Bastian, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Canower?
Canower, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Okay, that is approved. Mr. Neufeld, good luck.
Moving on, we do have, in these last few minutes of our work session before the public hearing, we do have a new business item that I wanted to bring before the board. It is regarding the Penfield Square application in our mixed-use district. It is an architectural modification request that they presented to us for some color changes to the exterior materials of the independent living building. We provided you hard copies of both the approved renderings that were reviewed by this board and the proposed. The proposed has callouts of each individual material that will be updated. I think one of the key ones to call out here is that the white vinyl siding that was originally approved on the building is now proposed at more of a, give me a minute, there's an actual thing, a herringbone color. They've described it on their callouts in lieu of the pure white that was once shown. And I'm just panning around the sheet here to show some before and afters. We have a natural clay on some of the lower siding, as opposed to that herringbone, which is a minor change according to their original approvals, which was kind of more of a, I'm gonna say, earth tone, if you will. This is a slightly lighter color on the tower elements of these, the patios, so a warmer color, they described it as, as a tattletail, I can't believe that's actually a tattletail gray. Interesting name. Never heard of that. These things get weirder by the day. And then the stone is slightly updated as well to complement all these changes. Again, the big one, I think, the focusing on is the white that is being removed. I know that was a concern of the board when this was coming through. I'll open it up to your discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll be recusing myself on this.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, let the record show that Board Member Canower is recusing himself from this discussion. What's everybody think about this? My personal opinion is I think it actually looks, it's a nice change.
I'll agree with that. I think it looks-
Yeah, I don't have any issues with it.
I mean, what do you think about the subtle differences in the grays, Phil?
I think it's a softer, warmer color.
All right.
I like it. I think the white, getting rid of the white is the biggest.
Jim, any comments?
Yeah, I think this is the best thing they could have done for this project.
Okay.
Very, very happy to see these softer colors that we're gonna be looking at for the next 50 years.
Yeah, I know that when we were reviewing the project, you had some comments about that.
Yeah, very nice change.
Okay, so we could entertain a motion to accept the suggested changes?
Make the motion to accept.
Okay?
I'll second.
So we have a motion to accept or approve the changes by Tidings and a second by Bastian.
Hetskey?
Hetskey, aye.
Bastian?
Bastian, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
Okay, it's approved.
All right. Thank you all very much.
We've gone from white to light beige.
Yeah. Well, thank you, board members. That concludes all the matters that were part of the work session, and we do have a public hearing starting in a few minutes, and we can start preparing for that if we're all good there.
Yes, we can-
A little recess.
Probably recess until then. Just, I've been scribbling the phone number on the back of a piece of paper, so if anybody has public comments that would like to call in, 340-8771. I haven't finished scribbling and filling in the last two digits yet, but during the break, I will. And we'll recess for about, oh-
Two and a half minutes.
Three, four minutes until we can get set to begin the public hearing.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I will be recusing myself from the public hearing.
Okay.
So I bid you gentlemen a good night.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Burton, and have a good night. Rest of you are staying.
All right, let's recess so we can get set up.
All right, welcome back, everyone, to the June 11th meeting of the Penfield Planning Board. This is our public hearing portion. We have one item on our agenda this evening.
I gotta read that.
But for the record, I will read our little disclaimer that has come to affect our lives in the last couple of months. Due to the public health and safety concerns related to COVID-19, this meeting is being conducted remotely pursuant to the Governor's executive orders, including Executive Order 202.1, which suspended certain provisions of the open meetings law. The meeting is being video recorded and is being broadcast live on the Town of Penfield's website, www.penfield.org, and also on the Town of Penfield's Government Access Channel, Channel Number 1303, and the meeting will also be later transcribed. After the applicant presents their project to the planning board, we will ask questions of the applicant, and we will then open the discussion up for public participation. And the public participation period, we ask everyone to be patient with us as we are navigating through the technical challenges of doing that. This is my, not my first rodeo doing this, but it's actually the second rodeo. And so we've done this once before. This'll be the second time, and you can call in 340-8771.
Looks good.
And we welcome you to do that. And the nice people in the control room will probably put you on hold, and then as you're queued up, I will see you on the screen here, if I know how to work it, and we'll get you on the air. If not, you can also submit comments electronically. You go on the Penfield website, penfield.org, and there should be an icon there for live meeting-
You're close. It's in red.
Videocast or something like that. You should be able to find that the meeting is being broadcast right now, and you can submit comments and questions via email. All right, with that, Zach, please read the application.
Of course, I tried to do something on this. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Application number one, Crown Castle, 3 Corporate Park Drive, Suite 101, Clifton Park, New York, 12065. On behalf of Vapor IO, request under Chapter 250, Articles 12-12.2 and 13-13.2 of the Code of the Town of Penfield for preliminary and final site plan approval and expansion to a conditional use permit for the construction of an equipment shelter at an existing telecommunications facility with associated site improvements on a 1.3-acre property located at 1415-B Five Mile Line Road. The property is now or formerly owned by Dawnbird Belmonte and Zowne Single Family Residential R120. Application number 20P-0007, SBL number 094.18-1-7 point forward slash TWR. That's a new one for me. That was fun to say. Anyways, Anne Marie, she is here with us from Crown Castle, and she can introduce herself to get this public hearing going. And whenever you want, you can do a screen share of what you have, and we'll get that up on the screen for the board.
You have disabled participant screen sharing.
Oh, I'm lovely, sorry.
Anne Marie, if you could, while Zach's trying to get that ready to go, first off, welcome, and maybe introduce yourself and give us your address for the record.
Sure, thank you kindly. I appreciate being able to appear this evening in light of COVID. I appreciate how quickly your board has adapted. My name is Anne Marie Zamba. I am with Crown Castle. I appear this evening on behalf of Vapor IO. We are seeking to install a 16-by-5 concrete slab at grade at the base of an existing telecom tower at 1415-B Five Mile Line Road. I am located at 3 Corporate Park Drive, Suite 101, and that's in Clifton Park, New York, 12065.
Terrific. Have you taken that ample time to enable her screen share?
Took all the time I could. Believe I made it work.
All right.
All right.
Anne Marie, the show's yours.
Wonderful, thank you, guys. Bear with me for one moment. Okay. There we go. Okay. So we are seeking to install at the base of this telecom tower, essentially the beginning phases of a data center. To do this, we are seeking preliminary and final site plan approval and an expansion of a conditional use permit. We will need to expand the compound roughly 760 square feet to accommodate Vapor's proposed space. There will be no work done to the actual tower itself. No antennas will be hung. Presently on-site, we have wireless carriers. Current tenants include T-Mobile and Verizon Wireless. Vapor is not a wireless carrier, but rather seeking to increase edge computing at this location, essentially the next generation of the Internet as we know it. As you can see here, this is the existing compound. The proposed red will be Vapor's expanded compound. We are not removing any trees or altering the tree line as it stands presently. There will be no change to the traffic on-site. There will be no noise issues for neighboring residents. We believe that this is an ideal location to house the beginning parts of this data center, as it's already an unmanned telecommunications facility. as it's already an unmanned telecommunications facility. There requires, this data center will not require any maintenance. It will just, or, excuse me, it will not require somebody to be on-site regularly. There will be occasional maintenance, which occurs for the tower as it is presently. I welcome questions and concerns that the board may have regarding this project.
Okay. Thank you, Anne Marie. Bob, do you want to start off?
Yes. Anne Marie, I have one question. It looks like from the plan, there's no plans for any backup exterior generator. Is that correct?
That is correct, sir, yes.
Okay, so I would assume then any backup power would be done internally by batteries or something like that?
Correct. I'm happy to provide the board with the specifics on the stages in which the data center gets built out, as well as the HVAC, which cools it, and the battery components, et cetera.
Okay. Okay, it looks pretty straightforward, just a little bit of an increase in the footprint. And I know there is pending a variance. Is that correct? You need a variance for a setback?
Yes, sir, that's correct. I will be appearing before the zoning group reveals as well.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Anne Marie Willis, generate any noise?
Yes, it will generate noise. So I actually have a decibel level comparison chart. So standing directly next to the module, we are at a 90, 90 decibel level. So that is equivalent, and I apologize the outdated reference, but that's equivalent to playing a Walkman or now an iPod, your iPhone, your music, at a medium volume. So as you decrease in proximity to the module or the cabinet, the noise level obviously goes down. So from further away, you're looking at a normal conversation level, what you would hear in a normal office as your noise level that would be emitted.
How close is the closest residence? And what would the decibel level be at that residence? Do you have that information?
So I, the closest resident is actually the underlying property owner, which is Mrs. Bird Belmonte. And we believe that she will not be able to hear actually anything from where her home sits. The parcels in relation are also quite distanced. And if they're not hearing, I think there's a generator. We don't anticipate any noise issues. I apologize. I was just referencing a different document.
No, that's okay. So people in the neighborhood, the immediate vicinity won't, won't know any, won't really tell any difference in noise levels. Would that be an accurate statement?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. All right, and this is actually just for the pad right now. Is that also correct? Or is this for the whole enclosure?
No, so presently, this is for the pad in the beginning stages of the enclosure, which will sit on the 16-by-5. In order to accommodate the 16-by-5, we need to, you know, expand the compound, given the direction of the pad. From there, there will be additional permits that will need to be obtained. We had assumed a multi-building permit process to build this out in phases. It gets built in phases as our customer Vapor brings on their own customers, and the demand increases for this center.
Okay, so ultimately, you had mentioned at the beginning of your presentation that this would be the future, I believe, that you said, edge computing?
Correct, yes.
And would that be cell-based or wireless-based, I'm assuming, Internet access?
Yes, so it's different in terms of how we think of wireless now in terms of a phone. This is connected to two other centers similar to this, located on, you know, in a closer vicinity. Obviously not within Penfield, or I'd be before you multiple times. But essentially, we get three centers connected, and they're connected by dark fiber, which is routed underground. And this increases the, or stops the latency or the buffering as we know it, as we, as Americans, just increase our need for data. Every household has multiple cellphones that are connected to the Internet. We all have smart TVs. So COVID is a perfect example. The wireless carriers, their networks, were stressed when everyone was sheltered in place during COVID. And data centers like this will allow for less buffering, increased network speeds. Essentially, eventually, this will get built out to accommodate technologies such as, you know, autonomous cars. It's actually really neat.
So just to clarify, when you say buffering, you kind of refer to, if you're watching Netflix and it pauses and it just circles and circles?
Yes, sir, yes.
Not tree buffers?
And circles, and drives you crazy, right? So this would help alleviate that?
Yes, sir, correct.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
I have no questions, thank you.
I was going to ask about the noise.
Oh, sorry, I stole your thunder, so to speak.
I'll get over it.
Okay.
AJ, do you mind if I?
No, go ahead, Zach. Ask away.
Thank you. Anne Marie, just one quick question about that phase-out of the building and the HVAC. I know we previously talked about it. I just wanted to bring it up here. About how tall do you expect the structure to be? Or do you want me to show one of those examples that you provided?
Sure, I actually have the photos pulled up, if that's okay?
Yeah, that's fine. I just wanted to try and give the board and the public a visualization of what will be there besides the black and white drawings.
Understood. This helps immensely.
Yep.
So as you can see, can you see my cursor by chance? Oh. You do not have the correct screen.
Yeah, we just got to change over screen.
Oh, folks, bear with me. Success?
I see it on my screen.
Fantastic.
Yep, we have it here, too.
Wonderful. Okay, and you can see my cursor. Awesome. So this initial pad will be the 16-by-5. This is going to house the initial equipment as it comes in, primarily the new electrical service that has to come in, as well as the fiber that will come in. The next phase will be pouring this additional pad. This right here, the lower half, is actually where the computers get stored. So as Vapor brings on additional customers and they have the need to hold data closer to its consumers, that is what gets housed down here. This is actually the HVAC unit that keeps it cool. Luckily, we are in upstate New York, so we don't, you know, anticipate rough weather, similar to, say, Florida. So keeping this cool is minimally an issue. Once the HVAC is hooked up as well, the decibel levels go down dramatically. So once this is fully built out, we really do not anticipate any noise issues.
Okay.
So what's the, with it built out, with the HVAC on top, what's the overall height?
20 feet, sir.
And the, the existing building on that same site? Just as a reference, do you know what the height of that is?
I apologize, I do not. I do have a reference photo for the trees that would buffer the compound. And we believe that it will completely shield and buffer, that they are dense enough, that Miss Bird Belmonte will not see them, nor will the surrounding neighbors.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for those questions. Thank you for the answers. We will open this up for public participation. Once again, if you would like to comment, 340-8771. Operators are standing by. 340-8771. Call today, call now. If you'd like to comment on this application. Right now, we have nobody on the line, and it looks like there are, there have been no electronic submissions. We will keep this open for several more days so that if you do have a comment, feel free to submit a comment online to the Town of Penfield.
To me?
To our staff planner, Mr. Zach Nurseinger. So that would be planning@penfield.org. That is planning, just like it sounds, P-L-A-N-N-I-N-G@penfield.org. And I'd like to hear your comments. And if there are no other questions from the board, which I don't believe there are, Anne Marie, thank you very much for the presentation, and we will call this hearing closed.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Correct. Anne Marie, you're welcome to stay around. The board will now shift into a work session.
We have a call.
Nope, we ain't going to a work session yet. We have a phone call. So unclosed.
I will reopen. Okay. I just heard from...
Guess we could have waited like 60 seconds.
Control Command Central that we have a caller on hold. And they are working to get them up online. I have to say, I think it was, I think it was my...
I had to be. Had to be. Plus the salesman pitch of the call-in for all those.
Mm-hmm.
I was missing was "but wait."
Was what?
"But wait."
"But wait." "But wait."
Call now.
Did you hear that? It's coming in.
I heard a very, very faint voice.
It's a patching in shortly. I don't know how I heard it. Got lucky.
You have 30-year-old ears.
Proud of them.
Not 50-year-old ears.
31, thank you.
Too much drums and loud music.
Standing next to loud things.
Corridors.
Hello?
Okay, so we have a caller. Welcome. I'm sorry, I don't have your name on my screen, so if you would please introduce yourself with your name and address, and then we'd love to hear your comments.
Okay, so my name is Meg Keith, and I live at 18 Greg Circle. So this building you're talking about is literally in my backyard, if you will. And I have a great tree line. About two years ago, we had a horrible storm and a tree came down. So my concern is that when these trees start coming down, I don't want to see that building. So will they be willing to replace trees?
Okay, that is something that we can put in as a comment. Okay, so trees. Were the trees on your property, or?
No, they were not, and it was taken care of, you know, it's a large pine tree, and it was taken care of, you know, within a week, which was great. But my concern is, I already see the building because a tree came down, a little bit. That big building she's talking about building concerns me, especially if in five years from now, I want to move.
Okay. All right, do you have any other comments?
No, I mean, I'm just curious if they're willing to replace trees on that tree line that she keeps referencing, that people aren't going to see it if they come down because of wind, or just die naturally.
Right, sure. Okay, so need to make a comment about buffering and future buffering and maintaining the buffer?
Yeah.
Okay, and we can certainly ask that question of the applicant, and we'll get that information back to the board as, as part of this review process.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you very much for your call.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
You, too.
Thank you.
Want to ask a question?
All right, if there's any other callers, 340-8771. Going once, going twice. All right, thank you, everyone, for coming. Oh, Anne Marie, are you still there?
I am still here.
Okay. Regarding the, the request for continued buffering if trees fall down, will your client or the applicant, property owner, whoever is responsible for that, maintain the tree line? Or replace trees?
Yes, sir, we will. We do it on a regular basis. We understand that, you know, this isn't a residential district. We appreciate that. I believe it was part of the original siding approval from the, from the Penfield Planning Board when this telecom facility went up, that the compound be adequately screened. Granted, those trees have grown, and now they are much larger, and they will accommodate buffering this, this building. I understand that. Should a tree die due to natural causes, or there be an issue due to a storm, our field operations technicians, as well as our construction managers are visiting the site, they will note the maintenance issue. Also, the underlying property owner is welcome to bring the issue to our attention as well, and we will replace the trees.
Okay. Terrific. Thank you very much.
Sure.
I, I had another question.
Okay.
The, the building itself, the exterior walls, what's, what's the composition and what's the planned color for that building?
Sure, sir. May I bring up a new screen?
Okay.
Sure.
So... This is the interior. What you're seeing here, these are actually all the various computers. And then below, so this is what the module would look like. I don't know if we'd call it title tale gray, but I would certainly call it a beige.
Hey, that's a great name.
Bill, what do you think?
I like it.
So this is a depiction of the coloring, as well as the photos previously depicted, which show it as a white, off-white color. Does that help?
Is that like metal clad?
I believe it is metal. I need to verify that personally. I've never touched it myself, but I would make the assumption it was metal. If that is different, I am happy to address that via correspondence to Mr. Nurseinger.
Yeah, I'm just used to seeing for a site like this, a lot of the other structures, they're kind of that concrete, almost like a rough texture, like a stucco on the outside. That's what you typically see. And I was just trying to picture this because when I saw the, the larger structure, it kind of looked like an overgrown, like a backup generator.
Yeah.
Yeah, or a container of some sort. So, you know, if it's, I suppose if it's buffered well enough, but I'm also concerned a little bit about the height because I don't think for any of the other typical structures that we see at a cell tower site, most of them, I doubt if they're any more than eight foot, eight or nine foot in height.
Understood. So this is the tree line where, which would be buffering. You can mildly make out some equipment, maybe fencing below. But we do believe that in relation to the other photos, that this will be screened. And I will get back to you and the board on the actual firm material makeup. My apologies.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, I wonder with, with the views around that site, the one person that called in, if it would be possible to do a rendering from that back line with the structure there, just to see what the view would be. to be, if any visual impact.
Sir, may I, I believe that address was 18 Greg Circle, is that correct?
18 Greg Circle. That's correct.
18 Greg Circle, yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, Bill, go ahead.
Anne Marie, you referenced 90 decibels when the equipment's installed, is that constant 24/7? Is it cyclical? I'd like some information on that.
Sure. So, once the, the site is fully built out and the HVAC is installed, again, that's going to be significantly less. As it goes through stages, I'm going to have to provide more information to the board on the decibel level at each various stage.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, once again, I will thank everyone for attending, and I was going to say, coming, but nobody really besides us is allowed to come here. Appreciate everyone watching, appreciate the comments, and we will maintain acceptance of public comments for several more days. And with that, I will call the hearing closed.
Anne Marie, stay on.
Yeah, Anne Marie, please, you can go ahead and stay on. And we are staying on air, but moving into the work session, finishing up portion of our meeting.
Yep, all right, so, public hearing closed, work session beginning. Anne Marie, if you don't mind, ending your screen share?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, let's bring my, oh, Burton's not on, so I don't have to do it.
Do you guys want to say how long you're going to keep the, the public comment period open?
Sure, is it, should we keep it open?
Seven days.
Is it seven days?
Yeah, I just think it should be clear how long that's going to be.
That's fine, seven days is the period.
Good.
All right, so, now that we're in our work session, I'm just going to kind of bring up some things I wanted to have reference for the board. You know, what, part of what the applicant stated is, when this was installed, yes, there was a landscape plan that was approved. You can kind of see this here on their site plan. This is kind of a larger scale of what they're looking at, as the app, this is like the residential home up front, and their property at the back, and a former water tower behind it. I'll pull up Google Maps here to kind of help communicate that. There's three parcels here, again, the house, this is the site of the cell tower, and this is the former water tower on the back half of the property. And then, also, as you're driving by, this very large extensive property is the radio tower that you see on Five Mile Line Drive, very, I can't even guess how tall that thing is, probably 300 feet-ish, and don't climb it. The resident that called is here in this cul-de-sac at 18 Greg Circle. Let's see if I can drop a pin on it. So it's this house here, in relation to the site. Just to add on to what you were saying, Bob, to try and just continue that conversation, that's that line of sight that you're referencing.
Yep.
So, it sounded like you're asking for some sort of, again, like a line of sight diagram of what it might look like?
Correct.
From that angle? Just to help, Anne Marie, help give you a little more direction, more, kind of see what is that, what is that cul-de-sac area looking at now, what will they see in the future?
Sure.
Like, like we've done with other, some other projects, I would assume, probably those houses are, some of them anyway, would be two-story homes.
Yep.
So the visual would be, you know, could be 10, from a 10-foot elevation.
Yeah, you may have, you may have to adjust that for second story or first story, right. But as we see, you know, this is a wooded area, they've done substantial plantings, and as the applicant stated, they're willing to continue, and probably part of the original approvals of this site is maintaining that buffer around it over time. So they do have, we probably have some existing conditions in place already to enhance anything that comes down.
Do we have any similar structures, like they want to put up?
Not to my knowledge, no. I think this is one of the first cabinet equipment structures like this that will be installed at one of our sites. As Bob said, usually, we see something that has more of that preform, concrete structure around the internals of it. This is definitely a different form of what we're used to, but the, I mean, the buffering is there. We actually went out last week and took pictures of what's out there today, and I apologize for this projector not being what it is. As you can see, pretty substantially wooded, and this is looking from the northeast corner as you drive into the site, actually looking, if you were thinking about...
Yeah, so the lady's house would be...
Where my hand is going.
Kind of straight back through a bunch of trees, and I'm wondering if she's really referring to that radio tower.
Radio tower, or just more exposure of the cell tower itself, perhaps?
Possibly.
But these trees are from just last week, trees, photos, losing my mind. Again, trying to show the front half of it, as Anne Marie showed, there's an existing tree buffer to the front, and for this, the property owner on Five Mile, this is looking at it from the other angle, behind that, and what else?
And they got to go before zoning anyways, right?
Yeah, they still have to go to, before zoning next week, regarding the front setback and, of that structure and for this use on that property, again. But yeah, there's, there's some pretty substantial buffering already in place for this site. With that being said, we did issue a PRC memo for this, they have responded to it, we just have a couple of follow-up items to address with them. Nothing that really pertains to your review process at this time, it is just a simple engineering matter for construction. Thoughts, concerns, anything specific in addition to the line of sight exhibit that you would like to see from them, along with some of the decibel?
For decibel readings, the 90 decibel reference, that's pretty loud. That's very loud. So, and if that's a constant, depending on the frequency, that neighborhood, there's a house that's much closer than the one resident that called in, they're going to hear it.
And it sounds like the HVAC is going to be at the top of the structure versus a lot of times on the cell sites, they're packs that are, hang from the wall, that are much lower to the ground.
Well, that was something I saw in her rendering that they showed from the Vapor sample.
Yeah, it looked like it was next to it versus...
It looked like it was on the end of it, as opposed to on top of it. So we can get some clarification about, is it going to be that, is it going to be that image, or similar to the example that was shown?
Okay.
Right.
Yeah, if that, if that sound source is, you know, lowered to the ground where there's more buffering to absorb it, that's going to be, you know...
Right.
Certainly a better situation.
Are either of these issues reason enough to not get started with resolution, or?
I'd like to see the noise levels, and this, again, it looks like there's going to be one piece of equipment installed now, and then in the future, there's going to be the, the larger, 20-foot tall. So, we'll need the decibel levels for those, because it could be quite loud for the neighborhood, that's my concern. And without more information, I can't tell. I mean, because it's logarithmic, the farther away you get, but we can...
Microphone, please.
Oh, sorry, yeah, we, but, so, if I, if I can get that data, I can do some calculations at how far away the residences are, I can determine the, the decibel levels at those residents.
Okay.
at this time, then?
Well, we're waiting information, we're waiting information from the applicant.
Okay, I was just following up to AJ's question, just wanted to confirm that. Okay, so I have, I have those three items, plus the outcome of the zoning board of appeals application next week. I, I don't, I don't assume this board has anything they really want to communicate to that board right now, just let the ZBA do their process?
Yes.
Very good. With that being said, we can wrap this up, ask to table, take a vote to table this matter, and I'll communicate those things to the applicant and get those back to you for the next meeting.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to continue tabling this pending more information from the applicant.
I'll second.
All right, so we have a motion by Kenauer, second by Bastian, to table the application.
Okay, Hetske?
Hetske, aye.
Bastian?
Bastian, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings?
Tidings, aye.
All right, it's tabled.
Anne Marie, was there anything you wanted to add? I'm sorry, I, I should have asked before.
No, that's fine, I have my homework, I'm, I'm good.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much for presenting tonight.
Thank you, have a great weekend.
Thank you, gentlemen, you as well.
Do we have any more items that we need to address?
That's all.
Any more business before the board for tonight? No? With that said, we will adjourn, and wish everyone a good evening and a good weekend. Thank you for your patience at home, and thank you for tuning in.
Okay.